Didn't we approve the agenda?
Second.
Move to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent agenda. Questions on that? On our agenda.
Would we approve the consent agenda?
Move to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Old business, power generation. You have some new information for us?
No, not really. Last council meeting asked that we come up with a purchase agreement from Foley, so we did that. Also reached out to Ben and talked about the financing on paying for it. So both of those should have been included in the council package.
That purchase agreement, can you just go through for the council what's included in the purchase agreement?
Okay, so I have two different purchase agreements. One is for the two units and one is for the three if the third is available. The purchase price from Foley is 455,000 each and it doesn't matter whether you buy two or three. That's the per each price. I don't know if you remember, but some of the other stuff I've got you in the past. We have an estimated installation cost of 350,000 per unit. So this purchase agreement is just for purchasing the units and having them arrive onsite. It also includes Foley's responsibility as far as what they will do. That's concluding oil and a freeze, radiator catalyst if needed, and a new silencer. They are still exploring whether or not that we could drop the price of these units by getting ahold of the used radiators that they're currently using. Still don't have an answer back on that, but that's, you know, we could lower the cost a little bit if we can somehow get our hands on those used radiators at a decent price. I guess the problem with them is where they're located. They're on the 15th story of a building, so I'm not sure if it's the cost to get them down exceeds their value or they thought it would be. But so at this point, I don't know, but the 455 price does include the new radiators and everything else I mentioned. We have spoken with KMEA and the Midstates Group. They are coming tomorrow at 3 o'clock roughly to talk about both the generation project and also possibly including them and the substation project also. Might have a little more information on the install after tomorrow, but as far as dates and such, but you know, how soon that they could get to them. Really, that's about all the new that I have.
The winter stand's not responsible for getting water to the 450th floor, are they?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Whoever purchases.
No, no.
Foley or whoever.
Yeah, we're purchasing them delivered to Baldwin City, so.
You're saying the radiators. Getting the radiators now.
And it's not catalytic? There are no catalytic on these?
I don't believe so.
Last time we had this discussion about this, I thought it was always no catalytic required.
We don't believe there are, but it would take a formal request to the state to know for sure whether or not they are. But under the state laws, we don't think that there will be required. But they have been included into the price just to, you know, to cover all of our bases. And if we do not have to purchase catalysts for them, then the price will come down, so.
You said you have prices of all three?
Yes.
Are they all three in the same place?
Yes, all three identical units.
Where's that at?
North Carolina somewhere. They're in a data center somewhere with high security and for some reason they're not giving a lot of information about them, so. I do know, I do have a copy of one of them's maintenance log from the Caterpillar dealer out in North Carolina. And they serviced them as early as middle of June. And they have a worksheet on them of what dates and hours on the unit that the service was done and they're still running them, so.
So they are in use?
They are in use right now, so. Or were at the first of June, first half of June.
When would they be delivered?
From my understanding, they want them to be removed as quickly as possible. And from there, they would go to Foley Cat in Topeka where they would be gone through, tested, load tested, make sure everything's fine on them. And then we'd have to make a decision of where we're going to store them at that point.
Now the radiators available, if you can't get those.
Yes, new ones, yes.
Any questions for Jerry?
Thanks.
Anybody else like to comment on this agenda item? Have a little discussion?
We're gonna have somebody talk about funding. Maybe we'll talk about money?
Well, that's part of it, I mean, part of our discussion, speaking about funding. Finding out the cash reserves that we have, which is a thought where we wanted to get with this.
Yeah, I think just, I don't know how much I just talked into, but that work session, but previous time we talked about this is taking it out of electric fund cash reserves, which was twice as much as our stated target. So based on this purchase agreement, these two plus installation take up about, estimated to be about half of that. So actually wouldn't have to bond anymore. We can pay for it out of reserve, get reserve back down to our target and move forward.
What was your original target?
For the reserve fund, target, which target are we talking about, Jerry?
Right again. Do you remember?
Twenty-five percent, so I think 1.5.
Are you talking about target? Twenty-five percent is typically.
1.5 million.
1.5, that's what you're talking about, yeah. That was the number.
And how long ago was that?
That was set out policy back in 2015, I think.
I'm not sure what that's. So the reserve target is percentage of the annual expenditures. That's what we talked about. And we talked earlier in previous council meetings about maybe amending the policy to include a range, no less than 15 with a target of 25. So that, you know, as you have expenditures that you use that reserve fund for, if you have a range, you're not instantly out of policy, right? You'd work to get it back there, but you could fluctuate in that range. So we talked about, you know, at the end of this year revising that policy for our funds to be between 15 and 25 percent, as opposed to straight 25 percent.
And in the last, last meeting we had, and this was, we went through this funding stuff. I'm here with Ben, but he's here to help us about that. Pretty much gave me the security that this can be done and paid for as it goes along. Is that correct?
The two generators, yeah.
It'll be paid out of cash. That basically is in the reserve fund that's generated from the utility rates, utility bills, so it's, you can think about it as already being paid for by the community. And we're just going to go out and actually spend it. There'll be no additional burden to the taxpayers because it's sitting in the fund. We went out and did a bond, you know, that debt payment and rolled into our utility fee and we'd have to increase that to cover that debt.
But that could be done.
What's that?
That could be done.
That's the option, that's the other option.
What? In our bonding, where do we stand credit wise or however you put it, in our bonding? Are we in good places with bonding agents or are we down or?
So I think Ben mentioned it last time, but we did get downgraded.
That's right.
Yeah. Downgraded from double A.
Double A plus.
Plus the, yeah. We got downgraded slightly based on a bunch of factors that they look into. One of them was, you know, our reserve funds have been fairly low.
The general.
In the general fund, the general fund, which is the one they actually pay most attention to. So I think as you guys talked about in the work session, the plan is to get that reserve fund healthy next year, you know, and then work to get to 25 percent. So to answer your questions, yeah, we're slightly downgraded and based on what Ben had thought, you know, it might cause 25, 30 basis points from a lending rate. It depends on how big the loan is, the number goes up, but yeah, it's not, it's not painful to worry, we have to do something.
It's not something we need to worry about.
No, we just need to watch it and have a plan to move it back to the other direction. So when we go bond substation, it's a much bigger number and, you know, so 30 basis points is a bigger dollar amount. So the plan is just try to work that back. I think you probably saw that in the work session where the general fund reserve fund will be much healthier. You know, we doubt the budget that's going to propose next year than it is this year. That's what they will look at when they're going to look at breakness. I think it's over two years? So it'll be two years for the breakness.
It'll be that long before we have a good thought anyway, before we have an operation anyway. It'll be on it.
Can I switch gears a little bit? Jeff, if you don't mind answering again, I repeat yourself a bunch because we're not experts on this, but. So the three megawatt generator, right, there's three of those available.
Two megawatts each.
There are two megawatts each, all right. Now, as far as two megawatt capacity, I know it's tough to project, so we don't know exactly what it's going to look like when we come off the bus with the other company. But how much annual bulk revenue would two megawatts of capacity sold to the open market bring?
Well, if we went with today's pricing, it's on for two and a quarter per KW per month. I'm trying to think of what we get out of. Well, the downtown three megawatts, I think, brings us in 100 and, or is, would sell for 130,000, I believe, in an annual. I'd have to do the math on that, but I think that's the ballpark.
So is that ballpark, two megawatts would equal 130,000?
Three megawatts, yeah, so two would be, yeah, two thirds of that, yes. And also Rob reminded me of something that was asked last time, I believe it was Jerry asked if we had to pay sales tax on these. I did verify that they are sales tax exempt in Kansas.
Yeah. By seven. Now, so the direction we're going with this here is, I kind of had this idea the other night. I'm still very comfortable with two generators, but I did kind of want to put it out in the ether in the spirit of the conversation that we had during the work session, which was a way to credit back or make an affordability conversation more. And we kind of went the direction of like the one-time credit and that kind of made the most sense. Everyone kind of agreed on that and my mind kind of started wandering a little bit. I said, well, what if we ended up doing a third generator? It made sense that the kickback on that capacity that we sold to the open market, what if we could just roll that to make it more of a continuous credit to the average utility consumer? And I don't know that that, I don't know that that number is quite significant enough, you know, justify a third generator, but I did want to put it out there. It's sort of just a kind of a quirky idea as to how to maybe, because my issue with the one-time credit is that it doesn't really solve the long-term affordability question. Are utility rates in Baldwin affordable compared to the communities? Yes, but there's still other factors and other burdens economically that people are facing. If you chip away at one, it's already affordable, that's still, that's still making them, that's still answering a part of that affordability question. So I just wanted to put it out there, kind of think through that or talk through that if anybody would oblige.
Yeah, I mean, interesting issue, but in my head, if it were that easy, everybody would be buying generators.
Yeah.
And just, you know, so, so does it cover the debt? Does it cover the operation? Because you got to run these things, right? You can't just buy them and stick them.
Right.
You know, so you got to operate them, so, you know, does that cover, you know, the cost plus another 100,000 a year? You know, to me, if it did, that's what everybody would do. So it's just not, in my head, making sense.
I didn't think about it until they mentioned that they had a plan B, that they did actually have some space, you wouldn't have to build the extra building. I was like, well, not every community has the extra space.
Yeah.
You know, not every community has three for sale instead of two, you know, that's come from the same place. I don't know, I just wanted to throw it out there.
The thing, maybe the analysis is the actual rate. That's the verb, right? It's two and.
Two and a quarter, yeah.
Two and a quarter, so you could probably look at and say, you know what? You know, if the rate gets to X, then it funds the generator, it funds the operation plus a profit, right? So there's this, having this crossover point, or if the rate gets to a certain point, it is advantageous to have the capacity.
Right.
Right, because then it is that, you know, that capacity's worth more than you pay for.
Right.
So I think we'd have to look at that.
Scott, I liked you on the amount too. The 450, the, so two megawatts at two and a quarter, which is today's price, is 54,000 a year.
Okay.
I think when I was thinking the other number, I was thinking of what we think the value is going to be in 2026 was 450.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's where I came up with that other number.
Sixteen-year payback profit, right? On a generator that size, is that right?
Uh, no. Eight oh five installed, so if you got 50,000 a year, it'd be. What would it be? You're right, yeah, yeah.
Thirteen, sixteen.
But yeah, throwing some.
Correct. So it's 16, 14, 16 years.
But you also haven't factored in the giveback.
Would you say you're right?
Yeah, that's just.
That's just to break even without.
Fifteen, sixteen years is to break even, so you're really not giving.
I still don't know that our customers.
Yeah.
I still don't know that we're going that direction. I just was trying to think creatively on how to make a giveback, less a one-time thing, more a continuous credit. Has to make sense. Like I said, it's not anything I'm pitching. I just want to talk for.
You can make a motion with that.
You can.
Oh, you can.
But I think, I think spending reserve, paying cash for these, not bonding anymore, is that giveback.
It is, it is.
It's not a giveback, it's an avoidance of paying, which is essentially the same thing. So I think that's a easy, easy first step and then more complex, you sort of.
Right.
Definitely, I mean, I like where you're going because you're going to lower the rates. I just think we'd have to factor in, like, let's say we didn't even do the third generator now because, you know, with a 15-year break-even point, that's hard. But then, then on the other hand, with the one-time giveback, right? We'd almost have to project out where our reserve would be in five, 10 years when we do need a third generator too.
Right.
To make sure the reserve will back up.
And then in the very end, everyone can be way ahead. When it was over, you'd be way ahead as far as the community goes and be able to make service. Right?
As far as.
As being able to have a product to produce, to produce the product to go to the end.
Yeah, depends on your growth rate, but yeah, potentially. All of this is project, trying to project out of growth rate or whatever. It's always possible, which is almost impossible. So I'm still kind of off the error on the side of buying the two now. Gets us back in to where we need to be. And then, you know, kind of what we've been talking about, let's see where our growth starts happening and how that affects here in the next two to three years. And that way we're not having to bond or spend extra money below our reserve on these resources. We got the cash sitting there to be able to give the service we need, right? That's my.
So you're going to motion?
I'm going to motion approve the purchase agreement.
I'm going to motion, I'm going to purchase the 14 units.
Second. Ben was going to say.
Not ready yet, Jerry.
Justify it there, Jerry, too.
Go. You make a motion for two?
I move that we approve the agreement with two generators. Second.
Move to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That motion passes. All right, next up, substation one. Do you have any updates on the substation, guys?
Just quickly, since you all know Chris was handling the majority of this, Pat and I have had to step back into it and try to get up to speed on it. So we don't have a whole lot new today. I did mention earlier that KMEA is going to be onsite tomorrow. We're going to discuss with them, possibly getting them involved in the project, give us another alternative for installation and such, another. And then also I reached out to Luke Staline Brain to get some more detailed information on their bids that Chris reported to you last time. I sent questions off to him today and I haven't got a response yet, but hopefully by two weeks from now I'll have a better update.
We'll just continue talking about the committee and you know on the agenda? That'll work. Next is ordinance, secondary unit ordinance 1450, conditional use permit for the country kitchen. Anybody have any further questions or is there, I guess, is there anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda item? Council, have any further questions or comments on this ordinance?
Does anybody want to test? This lady got room enough to do this with this person?
Want to go through our permitting process and be inspected?
Yeah, it was, so this has been on the, gone through the planning commission, everything for a while. Before Russ left, he had talked to them extensively, it will fit on their property. It's a pretty tight fit, but it conforms to our regulations and everything, so he recommended it and the planning commission also recommended it, so.
I think we're going to approve it.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second then? Julie?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jerry? Motion passes, 5A. Next, new business development agreement, Fire Tree. Lynn, you want to present this to the council?
This is a development agreement between the city and Baldwin Land Company, I think is the name of Jeff Hill's company out there. There were, of course, up there in Fire Tree Estates, this will be 5A. So what this is, is we pass the resolution, all unnecessary paperwork to establish our rural housing incentive district. Remember, we had all the districts that were mapped out, because you have to do that by ordinance. So we had all those legal descriptions and maps that we threw out a few months ago. This is the first subdivision that would come in under this. Basically what it is, is an agreement to cover the infrastructure with the increase in property tax over the next how many years it would take to do that. So you do that, you define that all in development agreement. And really what the development agreement comes down to is what qualifies as infrastructure costs that would be covered under that increment and therefore reimbursed to the developer, in this case Jeff Hill and the Baldwin Land Company. So this would be the first one. There's another one coming that would most likely be the one that's east of Heritage, but that has not gone through the planning commission yet. That has not been rezoned and planted yet because they haven't had a quorum at the planning commission for a couple of months now. But I suspect that'll be the next one that comes. So this will be the first one we've ever done. It, it's a lot of stuff to read, but the gist of it is what they're calling 5A, I believe up there, is what would be covered under this agreement and would qualify under the state program that we passed there, which we call RID, the Rural Housing Incentive District. So it's a way to incentivize housing here in our city and this should jumpstart it and get it going pretty quick. So when we get through this, there's another, like another ordinance we have to pass, another waiting period, but this, this will get us going in the right direction, so. My favorite question is.
Explain, because you're probably the most versed in the city on this right now, is how the numbers are figured under the state law? How the payback is figured and all that?
Yeah, it's really, it's really, right now you're getting taxed on bare ground, so there isn't much tax that comes off of that. As it develops and of course the property tax increases, if you don't understand what a tax increment financing district, it's really, it's TIF for housing rather than commercial or industrial, or it's what TIFs are typically used for. So this basically takes that increment and whatever then is in the agreement that qualifies as infrastructure, which is going to be used in streets and sewer and water and all those things, traditional land, that, that is then covered by the increase in the property tax until that's, all that infrastructure is paid off. Then they come back on as just another property taxpayer. So that's, you know, for the life of the incentive district, that's how long it lasts, or until it's paid off. So it looks really complicated, but it actually, and when you get down to it, it really isn't. What you're going to see is a rise in the property tax and that increment will be paying for the infrastructure, actually reimbursing the developer once they install that infrastructure. So they're still assuming the risk, they're still putting all that in, they're just being paid, paid through that property tax that will not go to the county, the school district, or the city until all that infrastructure is paid off. And I'll rely on it to develop into that, that new subdivision. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
So then is it X number of years or when the infrastructure paid off or whichever occurs first?
So whichever comes first, yeah. You go out to 23 years on a RID, but typically they don't take that long. And we suspect with the way that houses move here in Baldwin City and really in Douglas County, you know, whatever's up, whatever's built and it's new, it gets, it gets sold really quick, so. Now there's uncertainty in the market and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, that's always going to be there. But as of right now, people are still willing to buy homes here. And that's, honestly, it's a question we get every day, whether it's city hall, chamber of commerce, where we're going to find a place to buy or rent. And our, our answer is usually, there's not much on the market right now. So if you do find something, you better, you better jump on it quick. So we're going to try to correct that a little bit by adding more housing to our housing stock and this is a way to do it.
Just to clear my head, sit it away, so bare ground and right now, which we're not, property tax are basically minimal.
Yeah, it's really taxes ag ground right now.
As we approve this, you know, houses are built and sold and now the taxes for that, now developed property goes up. And so I assume those taxes, property taxes, and with the city, we hold it?
Well, through, through the county and then into a fund, yeah.
So the city's the one paying for the improvements to the utilities, correct?
Well, the developer will first, I think, get reimbursed.
So goes to the city and then through the county and then back to.
Correct, yeah.
So on the.
So on the cost, is it, and we see, I assume these are estimates?
Right.
Is it actuals or is it?
It'll be the actuals, whatever, whether they qualify, it would be the actual reimbursement for what they did, yeah.
So we really don't know?
No, the only thing they could do is give you the best estimates right now, so.
So we still, as I understand it, we still tax the bare land, we still get the tax.
You still get the, correct, yes, that doesn't go away.
The only difference is the opportunity to gain a higher tax, if you sacrifice that, and the idea is that that value would have never been there, not in this program. So this program really doesn't make sense for a community that's going to boom anyway.
Right, you wouldn't do it in Overland Park or something, and they can't anyway, but, but even if you were able to, you would not do that, no.
So actually, based on that, because that's similar to NRP, right? It's almost exactly.
Well, the NRP, yeah, just kind of a little bit reverse, because then you're rebating the taxes back to the person who bought the home, not the developer.
They can't rebate the land, the lot.
Oh, correct, yeah, right.
Right now, you're not even getting lot property tax.
Correct.
You're getting ag property tax.
Right, you're getting ag, yeah, not even, not even residential, yeah, right, so that's the difference.
So we still get our property tax from these developments?
Right.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that. So our property tax from these developments will still go up then, because if you develop 50 lots?
Right, it just basically freezes at what it's at right now, so you're still getting whatever that small amount is, but the increment then is what funds the infrastructure.
So then you don't get the property tax on the lot?
For residential, no, it'll stay whatever it is right now, as you established.
So it stays an act?
It freezes until it's paid off, right.
So it's a little different then?
So let's see, yeah, and that way it's a little different than the NRP. So, yeah, so this is going to get confusing, because that the NRP, which really favors the person purchasing the property and building a home, that's, you know, your homeowner is going to get that, the benefit of five years of that. This is targeted toward the developer who's going to get the infrastructure paid off through this. So you can do it either way, I mean, if we were approached by a developer who said, I want an NRP versus this, that's fine.
But we get cheaper housing because the lots are myself, or less.
Yeah, I think, I think you'd be, yeah, you'd be, I think you'd be crazy to pass up the RID. Yeah, I think that's the way to go for most developers, that's what you'd want to do.
Put a little background on it, so it used to be these TIF districts, Dodge City and places out west, we really couldn't utilize those for years and years.
Yeah, and they're the poster child for RID, I can tell you that, they are, they've got more RIDs than anybody, I think, in the state.
We're done with Dodge, right?
Dodge City, yeah, yeah.
So the idea is that, so I guess the idea is that you're trying to lure development, developers. The struggle has been to get builders to come in and invest in your community.
That's correct.
And sell houses fast enough to make money.
Because of the high infrastructure costs, because what Jeff would tell you, in any developer, it costs as much here in Baldwin City to develop as it does in Lawrence, or any other.
But they can sell houses.
And you can sell houses at a higher price and faster, so that's what makes it not so, I mean, you can still build it here, you can still do it, but it's not going to, it's not going to be as good as you could in some other communities, but with the RID, now that makes us competitive. And so a couple of years ago, when the state changed those laws to allow us to do that, that's why we went ahead and passed the program.
A little bit of it, you know, for the city, obviously, it's not going to help property tax for 15, 20 years, but it's school district, right, so FTEs potentially move in.
Absolutely.
More people buying stuff locally, sales tax, and then there are also utility customers. Right, so that's the trade-off. And then, once this RID's paid off, then the property tax does come in to the city coffers. So it really is a long-range plan to be where you want to get in 15, 20 years.
Right, and we've seen, kind of seen that within this year's assessed valuation, we saw that 15, 16%, and a lot of that went back to the NRP. What you can see in a couple of years from now is the first people who are in that, you're going to see that for real, then coming to all the taxing bodies, you'll see that, that growth. 5% has been our target, and we hit that this year, but you know, the NRP took another 11% to that, so we're rebating that back, but that's okay. But the RID will have a similar impact, you know, down the road, as you're talking about, then you'll see, you'll see that property tax increasing here. So you have that nice steady slow growth in the property tax, which is really want, you don't want the ups and downs and all that, sometimes that happens, but we try to avoid that. So, but you're right, then we have the ancillary effects with the sales tax and utilities and other such things like that. And hopefully people will be moving out there, we'll have school-aged children, and they'll be coming to our schools, so they'll benefit probably more than anybody under this system.
So this all remains the same until our houses build over and they're changed?
That's correct, yeah. When houses start being built and then they're, then that, the taxes will increase and that goes to the fund to reimburse for the infrastructure.
Well, the taxes go up in whatever, it's whatever term we decide.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
It's not when the house is built, it's for the city to recover, to start recovering the property taxes, it's whenever the term we decide. Correct?
Right, but this assessment valuation won't go up until something's built there.
It's a 10-year RID program, but we have to do 10 years for property tax, kickback.
Yeah, yeah, at least that long, you know, right.
I thought the term is determined by payment period.
Yeah, which it usually is, yeah.
Whatever it is.
But you said it could go as long as 23 years.
You know, 23 years is, yeah.
Project would never take that long, but you do have some variability, right?
Yeah.
So if you go out there and buy the lot, Scott?
I'm looking at the site plan right now. Sorry, pick it up.
I believe it's set back to 23 years, same tax rate, is that correct?
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't think that's the way it works.
Well, you could buy a lot.
Well, if you bought an empty lot and did nothing with it, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I was.
An empty lot would, yeah.
I was using the extreme, we would never go 23 years.
Right, yeah, and most people don't, it usually gets paid off quicker than that.
What's the term on this one?
I don't know, what were you asking for here, Jeff, I forget.
We said 17 years.
17, yeah, I think, I think the RID was there with 17 years on that.
Now, once the house is built, you do get the ancillary benefits.
Oh, absolutely, that's immediate, yeah, that's immediate, yeah, right. And that's always, as we've discussed, that's our biggest, you know, we do well on the property tax, we don't have a sky-high bill rate or anything like that, or, and our mill levy's been the same for a long time, we've been at that 40 range for a long time, as we're, if you notice, we go through our budget process. But the big funds for us are the utilities, and that's basically where a city like us who owns all those utilities, actually, that's where our money is at. So we're able to buy generators and things like that, which we just agreed to do.
But, just to be clear, you know, which took me a while to figure out in my own head, utilities aren't funded any other than themselves, right? So we're sitting on 1.5 million in electric fund reserve, that cannot be moved over to the general fund.
Besides the franchise fee?
Besides, yeah, because the 5% franchise fee on there, right.
We're kind of at it. Oh, 3%, I think it's 3%, right? Or 5%?
It's 5%, yeah.
Right, but there's no incremental for what we're currently doing, we're not planning to.
Just with our growth rate?
Yeah, you want just a rate, it'll be, yeah, just like property tax.
Change to actual dollar value, dollar value.
Right.
But, so the property tax really is an important part for the general fund, right? That's the key, so it's, this, you know, we've got to be very careful in what we do in the general fund, because we're kind of delaying the benefits of the property tax here. And you mentioned that, you know, the big question is, is do you do this? We don't do it if you don't need to, right? If we were building houses, you know, 20, 30 a year, whatever our target is, we would have to do this. But, you know, from all indications that we've heard from developers and everybody, to be competitive, we have to do this, and then the benefit is 15, 20 years.
So what you're saying there is, when you pass this, the developer starts building, he builds, the quicker we get to taxes.
Yep.
Yeah, that's actually the way it works. So.
They're moving them fast out there.
Right, and I think they will, I mean, they got a great incentive to build and move them quick, and so do we, so everybody needs.
Kind of the incentive is lower price point possibly to do the consumption quicker, because you're more competitive.
Right.
Lawrence and Durham, that may not be doing this program, so that's the theory.
I don't see that in all of this.
So Glenn, the bid excludes the bond 2%, what is that? Is that just, I just wondered if there's a bond associated?
Yeah.
That's a performance bond that contractor has to back up the quality of their work for 12 months.
Right, yeah. That's like any.
I have additional bonding costs, because those are on the, not a problem.
Right. Yeah, that's typical in any development agreement you'd find. So, do you have any question for Jeff?
Yeah, I've been trying to answer any questions.
He's the man proposing to get this thing going.
Ancillary benefits, so.
Did a heck of a good job, I guess I'll just, you know, record that and play it over and over.
I see the site plan, but you know, is there a, you know, what's the target? Now, what are these units, are they, is it a senior targeted, you know, so what are you targeting?
General family housing, I mean, there's 15 lots that were just developed and are just about built out now. This is really just an extension, a continuation of those 15 that are there right now. I would guess most of them will be three to four bedroom, you know, two to three bath, two to three car garage, similar to what you see out there right now.
What's the market price range for something like that?
Oh, man, if I knew a Realtor, maybe, I think the ones that have been going out there just recently have been the, the ones that have just recently sold in that area are, Casey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but 350 to 400 on those last few that sold in there.
Yeah, 350 to, well, 330 slab to 405.
Yeah.
What the price ranges are.
Yeah, they're good homes. The price of new construction is not cheap, I mean, as everybody's seen, inflation's a big part of that, but just in general, obviously, new construction's always been expensive. And as Glenn said, you know, really the hurdle is, for a developer, the cost is the same whether you're in Lawrence or Baldwin, and Lawrence, you can sell the lot for twice as much. So that's a big part of why there's no stimulus or no push on growth like you may see in some other local communities. So this really just allows us to get the lots at a better price point for the builders. You know, obviously, we need the builders to be successful, or else they're not going to build here. We need them to build a home that can sell, otherwise no one's going to buy them, so this is really just a tool to make that more feasible.
It's got nothing to do with it, what's the interest rate on a home?
Oh, 5.75 on a 30-year.
My only new banker.
About five and three-quarters on a 30-year. Yeah. Alright.
Anybody else here would like to speak to this agenda item? Council discussion? No discussion, I'll entertain motion. Glenn, one more question, just for the council. This next step after this is, what, a 30-day notice period?
I believe that's correct, I'll check with Kevin McCollum, our bond counsel, I mean, they laid out that flow chart. I believe that's right, there's, so there's like an objection period that you've got to go through for every time you.
And then we turn back an ordinance after?
It was an ordinance, yeah.
After the hearing, I think we have to have a hearing?
Correct, yeah, hearing, then you pass it, that's the final step.
So this is just one step in the total process?
The school district has one more penalty?
We have to, well, no, so we have to notify by certified mail, the school district and the county, I believe, and they have their 30 days of objection period. And then if they don't object over that 30 days, then we'll have that final hearing slash passing the ordinance.
Right, which again mirrors the TIF district type of development, that's exactly the same thing, that they have the right to do the same thing with TIFs in state and counties.
I just wanted to make sure you guys.
Yeah, so we'll come back, yeah, right.
But you've already talked to the district and the county, we did have down to have.
We didn't, we didn't hear any pushback by anybody. Because again, the school district, they're having that per pupil, property tax. They just need students, so. And that's, you know, Jeff alluded to the houses that have been built, I would say 50% of them have been family with kids, 50% of them have been seniors, that have moved into that 15, those 15 houses, so that's good.
And really, all those seniors, with the exception of one that I can think of, moved from the county into town. So we're not shuffling homes within the community, they're all coming into town.
Not necessarily as good as moving from in town, which opens up another, another in-town home, but.
Families did, all the families that, they sold a house in town and moved into that.
I got you. I mean, I need to get recalibrated, what order to lose these days, but I still think we've got a huge gap. And just hearing where these are at, it's like.
Coster. Coster. So CDC, we did discuss and all, we talked about community notes, but one of the things we discussed is going on, the tiny house ordinance, alternate housing ordinance, because we have nothing that says, but people can't do it. So there's a push in that direction as well.
Alright, I will entertain motion.
Alright, I move to approve the development agreement between the city and the Baldwin Land Company for the development of Fire Tree subdivision 5A.
Section E, right?
It's actually 5B.
5B, sorry. Yeah.
I'll second it with a 5B amendment.
I'm set up this one. That's my last one.
I know.
Oh, mayors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passes. Next, next agenda item, side-by-side ordinance, first reading. Susan or Dakota, do you guys want to introduce this to the council?
Well, I can start, and Dakota, maybe you can kind of go over the changes that we made today. We just met about this this afternoon, so if you read it prior to 15. It's been updated, so there's been a lot of inquiries as far as, you know, drive, utility vehicles, side-by-sides, micro trucks in the city, and we've been meeting just to provide some structure around that, so, you know, you can rather say, yes, you can, and this is the ordinance. So we wanted to make it, you know, as accommodating as possible, while at the same time, still putting in some safety measures. But I want to kind of go through what we discussed today, the changes that we made.
Sure, so there's two separate ordinances, or two separate sections, it's actually going to be under one ordinance because of all the changes they made under one ordinance, but there's two, the worksite utility vehicles, and then for micro utility trucks, so two separate types of vehicles. We went over those today, one of the changes we made as to the definition for a worksite utility vehicle to make it, because of changes in the marketplace for these types of vehicles, they have now got extended cab, extended beds, they're much longer than they were previously. So now we're looking at, it was 100, I believe, in 44 inches, now moved to 180 inches in length, the entire vehicle. So that will cover the larger models that are in production right now and that can be used by folks who want to drive them around town. We also stripped out a number of the sections, the equipment section, which would be subsection B, for worksite utility vehicles, we stripped out a number of equipment requirements, partly because some manufacturers do not, they don't come equipped with these, partly because there's additional requirements if the vehicle's operating at night. So the, we stripped out and left with were just rear reflectors, brakes, a functioning rear mirror, and seat belts as installed by the manufacturer. If you're operating at night, you can usually have headlamps, tail lamps, and brake lights, so that people can see you operating the vehicle, but we decided to not include that turn signals, and you can still use hand signals and given the types of vehicles and where that we operate, I think that was the necessary, because often they don't have those on them. The other, I think, issue we addressed on this that was in regards to child safety seats, these vehicles aren't equipped with anchors or the types of equipment that you normally be able to affix the child safety seats. So we removed that language from the ordinance, instead of all passengers, they need to have seat belts in the vehicles, all passengers in vehicles must be seat-belted in, but now it's not the same as having the child safety. but now it's, it's not the same as having the child safety, um, guy, so child safety statutes that have been put in place by state regarding child safety seats, booster seats, the weights and all the types of things that go along with that based upon the fact that these are going to be short-term drives, mostly local, convenient, like, low, low-speed drives, so we decided that that would be stripped out from the, from this language, from this ordinance. The micro, uh, utility truck, that has remained almost exactly the same that it was before, um, those are more, uh, enclosed cab, faster, like, we normally heavier vehicles, and they're more, um, like a normal vehicle, so we kept, I think, the language of the micro utility truck the same. But the big changes you see in the, were all within the utility vehicle, and trying to make sure that they were, committee members can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think trying to keep it more in line with the golf cart ordinance right now, and so it'll be a little more fairness between those ordinances, as the types of vehicles are fairly similar, but this, the ordinance as originally drafted had a lot, far more requirements for the folks who were driving utility vehicles than they would for folks driving a golf cart. Um, and so that was what I think the committee focused on, as well as, I mean, making sure, making sure that vehicles were still operated safely, other vehicles could operate around them safely, and then the city, um, was protecting itself from a liability perspective. I think we all know that vehicles are being used in the city right now, and we're regulating them, making sure that, uh, the police department has a registration for them, and they're being registered annually, we have tags for them, um, so you can identify the owner and operator of the vehicle, and that would, that's, I think, the goal of the committee, they've been making some of these changes.
Questions for Dakota on that?
So, are the golf carts the same as, as this?
Golf cart ordinance is different.
Golf cart ordinance. But we didn't.
Okay.
We haven't touched with golf cart ordinance.
Okay, I wasn't sure about what you said there.
This is a brand-new ordinance, by the way.
So, Julian, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear there, I think what we had wanted to make sure was that based upon the currently in place golf cart ordinance, we didn't put in place a utility vehicle ordinance that was far more onerous on the folks driving utility vehicles, even though they were being almost treated very similarly in other respects, um, where golf carts don't require seat belts, don't require any sort of safety apparatus, um, and can drive in almost all the same places as these vehicles. The big difference between the types of vehicles, I think, and golf carts versus some of these UTVs, UTVs can be a little larger and can be operated at a much higher rate of speed, um, so, but none of these would be allowed to operate on highways, but on the state interstate federal highways, so basically, most probably, you wouldn't be able to drive it on fifty-six. Um, but I think up to forty-five mile per hour is what we agreed upon, so you can still go north on Sixth Street, and, um, with that, so forty-five mile per hour zone.
No turn signal requirement, or?
There's no turn signal requirement here, um, the state statute definition of like, equipment doesn't include the turn signal, um, I will, the ordinances and other language from other municipalities kind of split on that, there's some ordinances are very detailed and require a ton of safety equipment, goggles, helmets, I mean, so, there's a lot, and then some don't require this as much, and I think, um, we've kind of, not explicitly, but done some of the things that are required, but the turn signals don't come standard in a lot of these vehicles, certainly not sub-site older models, um, so the thinking is still use hand signals, that was the, I think, the committee's decision after the day.
I kind of thought of, you know, what is allowed on motorcycles, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe on motorcycles, you don't necessarily have to have turn signals, you can use hand signals.
You do.
Oh, you do.
To be street legal, yeah.
So what you, so, the comparison on this, you'd be talking about something like a bicycle, bicycle don't need to have any signals, and the types of golf carts don't need to have signals. And so I think that's, the committee's discussion about this had more to do with golf carts.
Any other questions for Dakota?
So, they, they have to have insurance.
Yes.
Yes.
And that, so when you register the vehicle with the police department, you have to show at that point license and, uh, insurance, and then insurance has to specifically have the vehicle listed on it, so it'd have to be specific to the vehicle that you're willing to register.
So, they would have to kind of regard this license, they can't, kids can't regard it as a license?
Correct.
Really no way, no way they're registered until you pull them over and check.
Exactly. I think the best way to put it, I think, that's in flux right now, is to what she was getting bids on placards and stickers for that, but I think that's in the works right now, so there would be, now, and this is what we talked about excluding these as well, there's not a, the database would be kept here, um, if you saw a vehicle that's operating, and you're trying to figure out whose it was, you can certainly read the, if there's a placard, you can read the placard, but you have to go back, either call in to the, uh, police station or go back in and check the logs, see whose vehicle that was, if you need to do that.
This is after the fact, I guess. Some of these vehicles that we're talking about, are they liable for being licensed tag, like motorcycle tag? Some of these four-wheel, they're not a little motor, not a little fast, I mean, like the Gators and stuff like that, don't they? Kind of so that you could put license tags on?
You're talking about, like, they are built to have, the place should be fixed, a tag of some sort? I think some models are, some models are not, but they do not need to be tagged, so it just depends on the model.
There's no requirement, they don't have to tag.
No.
Is that an option?
An option to make them get tagged?
No, if they wanted to, they could.
I don't believe they can, they cannot get, they, they're property opposed to vehicles, so that they wouldn't be ta, it's taxed in different manners, I mean, it's not, doesn't, wouldn't need to be tagged.
Where I was going with that was if they were buying license tags from the state of Kansas, did we need to sell them a license tag, or tag it as well?
No.
That's where I was going with that, they got to say they don't need it, so it's into that.
Any other questions for Dakota? Anybody from the public like to speak to this agenda item? This is all for free. Is there any council discussion, council comments? We'll move on, we kind of hit this one on the same, same thing, the micro utility truck ordinance.
It's included in the same ordinance.
It's under the same ordinance, okay.
Yeah.
So they need to include it under a second.
Doesn't need to be under a second, and it is, well, not identical to the mic, to the utility, um, but worksite utility, uh, vehicle, second, there's a different definition for what a micro truck is versus, um, a UTV. In the majority, the vast majority of the section is the same language, there's additional requirements for the micro utility truck and their equipment, those do include things like, uh, excuse me, um, oh, stoplights, tail lamps, reflectors, brakes, horn, a roll bar, because it's a enclosed truck, um, it does not include on those, uh, turn signals, though, um, and so that's, they both, you know, have turn signals as an requirement on the vehicles, um, but there are more equipment restrictions for the, or requirements for the micro utility truck.
Council committee reports, what are your findings, Scott?
Uh, I believe our last committee meeting, we, at the time, discussing the general material for the budget workshop, what's called, last week. And that's it. We need a meeting on Friday, four.
Or do you think we need a meeting?
I don't know, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Glenn?
Glenn, do we need a budget meeting?
No, I think we're okay for now. I think not, there's nothing new that's coming forward, so.
So the next meeting will be scheduled two weeks from Friday, uh, at seven forty-five, second floor, city hall.
We need to develop, or?
Yeah, we met on the twenty-seventh, um, discussed the fundraising again for the, uh, community center, discussed kind of getting the online campaign going there, um, also discussed getting a committee together for some of the fundraising stuff. Right now, it's kind of been, um, just council members and Lynn and you, they, they kind of maybe go back to where we had this, um, committee before, that was helping out with a lot of the, uh, public outreach, and now I think that will transition more to funding, so. Can I just start moving in that direction with the fundraising, um, had a community member speak about the old gas station on the corner, um, that had gone by the lumberyard, possible uses for that, um. We had a facade grant application that we had reviewed for the yoga studio that was approved, um, and discussed, um, starting to get the conversation going for, um, alternate housing, tiny housing, ordinances for those, kind of get, get their supply of housing, what we can. Uh, next meeting is the twenty-fifth, four o'clock, second floor, city hall.
We just met today, and great week, again, quite live, it was red, um, meetings, actually, which one was it this week? Yeah, the twelfth, four o'clock.
Works utilities, do?
Uh, we have not met since the last meeting, um, our next meeting is on the fourteenth, nine o'clock.
Fourteenth, thanks, Scott. We did not meet since the last meeting, uh, no meetings planned, I think we're waiting, we are waiting to get the citizen, um, person assigned, I think that's ongoing, so we'll need to pick a date, probably, I'm guessing sometime in August, we can, make sure if the budget, we'll have left the new budget, we'll pick days if it hasn't passed in, like, so I'm looking for something probably late, like, the fifth of August, right now for our next meeting, we'll have the chance to have somebody onboard, citizen, and I should think we need to use one soon.
So I, I saw one person applying for being a citizen.
Two.
There was two?
Yeah, we had one interview last week, and then the other one, he couldn't, last minute, he got called into work or something, and had to push it back to this next Friday, to me, so, I think we can have this next Friday, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
So who does this?
That's been, me and Scott, Glenn was out for this last one, he'll be sitting in on this next one. Did the minister staff comment anything?
It was a lot cooler when I woke up in Colorado yesterday morning, it was fifty-two degrees, but, hey, good to be back in Baldwin City anyway, so.
Probably right.
I ain't going.
You ride a train?
Did. I did. It was awesome.
True.
It is, yeah.
Any council comments?
Are we gonna do anything about the fireworks?
Have to look at the, at the committee, I mean, I'll be honest, I thought it was pretty subdued this year.
It was, compared to, to other years, but, I just think, it's not a long time ago, fireworks were gone.
Yeah. I got eight days, nine days, or something like that. Yeah, we can, we can definitely discuss it, you know, I, I got comments over the last week on both sides of it. Some that liked it, and some that didn't like it, um, and, uh, you know, the, I'll go back to, you know, the reason we did that is we had the Fourth of July land on a Thursday, and so we had people in, in groups that requested that we extend it out, and we were doing that, and literally, I think, we did it for two or three years in a row, where we extended it by one day each time. And so the council just said, hey, let's just go with state, state statute, so. Um, definitely can talk about it again in committee, and kind of see, based on community feedback, and based on what we saw this year, um, discuss it.
I would be, I would be not opposed to looking at something that you can't, because it lands on a different day, you could set something that says it's three days before, I mean, you'd have to basically say, we want to make sure we include people that can only build weekends, and then maybe, so you have to kind of have some rules that you're trying to, and then maybe we can set a shorter window, or, and then you look at the hours as well, so. I don't know if anything makes more sense, but I would want to.
We can figure out vehicle, I think we can figure out.
Second, third, fourth weekend, and October, I mean, that's, what is that even mean, though? Yeah, we can look at it, we can try to look at calendars and project out, and say, okay, this is what this will look like, because the hard thing is, I don't think you can do three days this year, four, let's say, four days next year, three, three or four, next year, and then the, next year, after that's five, and then the next year after that's six, you almost have to just keep it consistent.
I guess you could.
I'm thinking eight or nine is two.
Is it eight or nine now?
It's June twenty-seventh to July fifth. You can still buy it on the fifth.
Oh, buy.
You can.
You still should want to.
You still should want to.
So, I think the fifth, the day after is to, so you can buy for next year.
The ordinance.
They can sell.
It does say till through midnight, the, midnight of the fifth.
Till midnight.
Midnight, midnight of the fifth, so it is.
Definitely be adjusted, a lot for sales, because I do know a lot of people that go out, try to get a, the sales price for the following year. It's, no, it's good for the tax, too.
I think you'd like to be consistent.
I got firm, for, for the.
You have to fire, you're gonna have to show. That's right. It has to be an ordinance, you shouldn't change the ordinance every year just based on what that calendar year looks like, it'd be nice to even have a formula, is what you're trying to say, right?
Yeah.
Well, you almost need to have, if Fourth of July falls on a Sunday, it falls on a Monday, yeah.
Exactly, you'd have a form, maybe seven different forms.
Right.
You can make a couple.
You need to have a rhythm.
Yeah.
That was intent from that council, was, they were tired of changing it every single year, to include a weekend, so they just set it out with state law. Yes, we can look at it, we can break down. All right, I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Okay.
One just second, all mayors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?